If you're willing to enable, would you be kind enough to stand for the invocation and remain standing for the flag, please? Dear Lord, we seek blessings from the task before us tonight. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberation with wisdom, our work and clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Will the regular public meeting, Henry County Board of Commissioners, six thirty PM, Tuesday, December sixteenth, twenty fourteen, come to order? I understand we got an amendment to the agenda, so I will open the floor for an amendment to the agenda as published.
Yes, sir. I'd like to amend the agenda to put between items twenty and twenty-one, the resolution requesting Henry County's local legislative delegation to submit local legislation clarifying the authority of the Board of Commissioners, the County Manager and the Chairperson.
Have a motion, have a second?
Say it.
Have a second, District Five, any further discussion? Only favor of the amendment to the agenda, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. So move. Next, we'll have public comments. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comments must sign in with a county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must sign your name, address, and specified topics you wish to speak about, or you will not be recognized. You will be addressing, be able to address the board for five minutes. So I'm gonna take this as an order was given to me. The first would be Mr. Jane Nescu Rutledge. If you would, come to the podium, state your name and address for the records, please.
My name is Jane Nescu Rutledge. I live at eight fifty-eight Honey Creek Road, McDonough, three oh two five two, which is just off of Snapping Shoals. It came to my attention on the weekend that there was a pretty bad wreck right as you turn off of Snapping Shoals at the four-way stop at the church on North Ola. I do not understand why we are paving roads over in Lake Down, but we cannot widen Snapping Shoals with the increased traffic and the increase in building of homes that is down Snapping Shoals. It is a death trap. We need markers in the middle of the road. We need the yellow lines because there's very few places that you can even pass on that road. We had someone pass us right at Buster Jeffers' pasture, which Mr. Boreman know where that's at, going about forty-five miles an hour night before last. About three weeks ago, we had a car that passed right at Lone Oak that went sideways all the way down nearly to Honey Lane before he regained control of it. I was just praying that nobody was coming around the curve there at Snapping Shoals and Honey Lane. That road is a death trap, so is South Ola that runs from eighty-one over past Larry Rapes going over to New Hope. Those roads, there are no lines on them, and I think that South Ola actually is in Bo's district, and I think the rest of it's in Mr. Boreman's. But we need to address that because senioritis will be starting up in a couple of months, and by senioritis, I mean those kids are driving like Hades. The roads need to be improved. I don't understand why there's been so much improvement around Lake Down, but yet we've not improved any of the roads over in what I call the poor section of Ola. Secondly, I hope that the commissioners start off the first of the year and try to represent their constituents according to what you politicked for two years ago, because I'm not seeing the changes that was supposed to have been given with the election of new people. I applaud you for what you're doing, but I'm disapproving of what you are doing, because you're not doing what you were politicking on. And I feel that as public servants, had I been elected, I would have stood by everything today that I've stood by three years ago. And I don't understand why everything had to go up in smoke as soon as Tommy took office and y'all were seated, and why Rick Jeffers had to run to the Capitol to try to make changes. It seems like a few families in this whole county control everything, and if you're not in that clique, then by jingoes, you just fall by the wayside. I'm sorry to see you go, Mr. Bowman, but you've got one heck of a little replacement. I've known his kid since he started walking. So I hope we've got some young blood coming on, but I just wish that you people would at some point in time realize that the people down on the Windmill Road, the people over on Esq Drive, the people over on the road that goes down toward the Water Authority, where Adair Dickerson used to own thousands of acres, all those roads need improving too. And I wish that you would do more to see that our EMS and fire people, police people, all of those public servants are given more of a share of an increase in wages in the upcoming year, because they deserve it. I talked to the lady that was in the wreck. She said that the policeman could not determine who crossed the yellow line, but the guy that got out of the truck proceeded to bam her. So you know, it's all in who you know and what your name is. So I hope all of you have twelve days of Christmas that you enjoy, because the twelve days before election, down to the day of election, what you were politicking for, you have not put in practice as of today, December, whatever. So, thank you and good evening.
Thank you. Next, we recognize Lynn Bellamy Mitchell.
I am Lynn Bellamy Mitchell. I live at three twenty-five Sadie Creek Way, McDonough, Georgia, three oh two five three. But individually and jointly with family members, I own several properties throughout the county. I'm here tonight about two of the properties that are family-owned. They're both in the Fairview area. One of them is sixteen Fairview Road, Ellenwood, and the other one is nineteen thirty-five Panola Road. They are adjacent properties. Early in the year, we entered into a contract with Henry County for the purchase of those two parcels for a park, and I understand from the previous meeting and some other things that those two contracts are now in jeopardy, and I'm here to ask tonight that y'all reconsider the contracts and follow through with the purchases. And there are several reasons for my request that the county proceed with the purchase of these two properties, and our belief that the county sincerely wished to purchase these parcels dictated several actions on our part. Some of those actions you could not possibly have seen. One of those was that we hired an environmental group to do an environmental assessment, even though that was, the full studies were going to be conducted by the county. We did that to be proactive, make sure our tenants had not done any type of environmental damage to the property since we, our previous full studies, and if there had been any damage so that we could be proactive in resolving any issues on the property. And so that, of course, cost money for us to do. Also, you probably can't really see what has been going on in the property from either Panola Road or Fairview Road, and I want to detail some of that as I go on. And during the negotiations with the county, we had asked that we be able to keep our tenants until closing, and we were not allowed to do that. We had to go ahead and ask our tenants to leave. So as soon as we executed the contracts, we informed them of the pending sale of the property. We asked them to begin vacating, and two of them did so fairly quickly, although they were massive undertakings, because one of them was a bridge and road building company, and they had a lot of work that had to be done. That work is virtually complete. One of the tenants was slow in moving. He had multiple equipment problems. It's a young company, didn't have the funds probably to take care of that. So we entered into negotiations with that tenant, and the week of November seventeen, my husband was on the property. A guy from Splas came out. He talked to this guy about the things that we were planning to do, and at no point in that conversation were we told not to proceed with any of that, because there was a possibility that the property would not be purchased. So we gave up our tenants at six thousand dollars a month. We also committed to spending about seventy thousand dollars to help this tenant to clear off the agricultural debris, which is the nature of his company. In addition to that, we spent legal fees to go ahead with the dispossessory proceedings in case our tenants were not off voluntarily, and we talked about that so that, you know, we were open within negotiations with them. And by the time of the last meeting, from November twenty-second to December second, we had hauled off one hundred fifty-five thirty-yard containers of agricultural debris. We continued moving that debris, even though a day or two after the meeting, we learned that our contract might be in jeopardy, because we also knew that it might not be in jeopardy, and we did not want to stop removing the debris and then that be a problem. So we have subsequently removed an additional two hundred forty-one thirty-yard roll-offs of debris, and that property is definitely looking really good. And like I said, we just want, I want to summarize in saying that we've spent the money on environmental inspections, debris removal, and legal fees, in addition to giving up seventy-two thousand dollars a year in annual rental income. And we tried to act in good faith, and we ask that you continue with the contracts with us and go through with the purchase of those two properties. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Pardon?
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Bill Tony, County Manager, racial problem.
Bill Tony, sixteen fifty-two Highway one fifty-five North, McDonough, Georgia. I was here before about some remarks that our county manager, Mr. Jim Walker, had made to another employee, calling him Willis, and an employee calling him Boss Man. But I had a question. I went through and got more emails, and on this one, it says, this is from Mr. Walker to Mr. Ash, and it says, "You need to get busy. I'm tired. I can't keep carrying your freight for you." That right there, I don't know what that means, but, you know, there's no room in management, especially running a county, of having racial slurs and everything else going on. I talked to Mr. Holmes this week, and I asked him, and I called several of you guys to get your opinion on this thing before tonight, and I asked Mr. Holmes what he thought about it, and he said he didn't see a whole lot wrong with it. It was just kinda like horseplay. Then I said, well, I'll tell you what, and with all respect, I said, "What if I called you buckwheat?" He said it would be very, very racially, you know, taken. So what I'm, you know, the thing about it is, I don't know if you know what, who Willis was. Willis happened to be one of two kids that got adopted by a rich white guy, and the whole premise of that television show was he had two black kids and a white, rich family, and, you know, that whole thing was just making fun of the kids. It wasn't once you look at it that way. I took offense to it, just like if you call it, she says something about me being bald. You know, I don't like it, you know? And you don't have, you don't have, you don't have room for this kind of behavior in the workplace, especially when you're a county manager. Now, Mr. Walker was, when he was in Alabama, with his attitude and his arrogance from when he worked with Mr. Ken Feinberg, he happened to be, they, you had a congressman, Bonner, in Alabama that told him he wasn't welcome back in his place, not to come back in his office, because he had been so arrogant to the people in Alabama over the claims that they had made, and he just, then I keep going through emails, then I find one from Mr. Walker to Mr. Preston, bragging that this little thing here wasn't nothing, that he could come up with a lot more, better stuff than what this is. So, you know, when you got somebody like that pretending to run a county and then having you guys get on board with the jokes and all that stuff is not right. I think that we need to get our, get ourselves a new county manager. I don't think this guy is doing his job. I think he's been disruptive since he's been here. He's been arrogant to the taxpayers. I've got other emails to where I had a guy that asked him for some, asked him for some documents and all. He said he don't write anything down. He ain't about to write anything down. In fact, he said, "I'm not especially bright, but my mind is repository of facts, options, and actionable items." Now, the man's even telling you that he's not exceptionally bright, that he don't write anything down. What kind of person in this room doesn't write down things, especially when you're looking at a police department that's already been an investigation going on with it? And you've got a taxpaying citizen asking him questions. So, you know, I think that his contract comes back up in March. I think we need to go ahead and ask for his resignation right now. You get him out for, he costs us almost two hundred thousand dollars a year. You can get a real county manager for almost two hundred thousand dollars a year. Now, I hadn't seen anything but arrogance out of him. I've read nothing but arrogance, and that's my opinion. And I'd like to say, Mr. Boreman, you need to quit partying so much. You're not a volunteer up there. You are getting paid thirty-five thousand dollars a year, and when I give you a week, I want forty-five minutes of your time to talk about this kind of stuff. You know, you could say you gotta party all week. I'm sorry, that's not good enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir, you have a comment?
That's the second month in a row that Mr. Tony's gotten up there and made comments about racial comments and so forth, and I grew up here in Henry County. Different Strokes was a show I always enjoyed. I enjoyed Webster. I'm a big Braves fan when I was a kid, because that was something me and my daddy used to do. We used to watch Sanford and Son during every rain delay. I listen to Darius Rutger country music right now. Now, your time's done, Mr. Tony, on the five minutes.
I didn't start, I waited until he was through with his five minutes, Chairman. You even hammered him, you even hammered him close.
I did hammer him.
But I just wanna say, it's Christmas time.
He's not asking a question, he's now making a statement.
That's exactly right.
Okay, he's making a statement.
I just wanna say, it's Christmas time. We wanna move the county forward, the business of the people, personal attacks don't help any of us. I mean, we are, everybody up here is a living, breathing person who has families, who has children, and it is hard to get here and just get beaten up when you're trying to serve the county and just get attacked. And I just would like to ask, in the spirit of Christmas time, just be careful with the allegations, because there is a power, you know, you can't take that stuff back. And that's all I'd like to say, is just be careful of the allegations you make.
For the last two years, we've had people that come out to every meeting, and they make derogatory comments about whoever. This month is the county manager. Last month, it was the police chief. Before that, it was the elections director. This stuff has to stop. It has to stop right now. It has to stop today. One thing I can say about Jim Walker is he does not have a racial bone in his body, not just, not a tinge of racial bone in his body. He's been a phenomenal county manager. I've served with four county managers, and by far, Jim Walker is the best county manager that has served Henry County. As a matter of fact, I can go all the way back to college. I played for Lou Holtz in college, who was a phenomenal football coach, which is a manager of a football team. Jim Walker, to me, is at that level of county manager, and with Jim Walker, we're gonna take this county to the next level.
Have you guys ever thought that other people have made this decision, that everybody doesn't agree with your thoughts?
That was comments. Any other commissioner have any comments? Anybody have any comments? Okay, let's move down to resolution ratifying the name of park property located within Commission Four District. The presenter will be Commissioner Reed Bowman, and this would be Exhibit One for the Board.
Mr. Chair, I move that we make a motion to ratify naming the park located within our district, as we'd spoken in the prior meeting.
Okay, what we're gonna do, I'm gonna ask Melissa if she would read the, okay, I told you that'd come in a second. Okay. We have a resolution in the book, Resolution Henry County Board of Commissioners, ratifying the name of a park formerly known as Kellytown Park, and now it would be known as Bud Kelly Park. We have a motion? Have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Now we'll have the proclamation. Melissa, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight we have a proclamation in memory of Mr. Bud Kelly upon the occasion of the official naming of Bud Kelly Park. Whereas the Henry County Board of Commissioners purchased property located at sixteen oh five Kellytown Road in two thousand and eight, consisting of approximately a hundred and twenty-three acres, to be used as much-needed park space in the northern end of the county. And whereas, the land is located in what is known as the Kellytown area of McDonough, named after the Kelly family, a well-established and prominent family, many of whom still live in Kellytown today. Whereas Edwin Crumbly Bud Kelly Senior, nineteen twenty-nine to two thousand and thirteen, affectionately nicknamed the mayor of Kellytown by area residents, was the owner of Kellytown Food Mart for more than fifty years, and was a beloved and respected member of the community, and enjoyed telling the history of Kellytown to everyone that crossed his path. And whereas, Kelly was a World War II veteran and a member of Kelly Presbyterian Church, and as a native son of Henry County, he thrived on serving people and never wavered in his desire to help others, making great strides for the betterment of Henry County. And whereas, he served as a Henry County Commissioner from nineteen sixty-nine to nineteen seventy-six, and in his capacity, he was an integral and active member of the Board, and was influential on many matters throughout the county, including the idea to establish the Henry Medical Center in Stockbridge. And whereas, District Four Commissioner Reed Bowman made the establishment of a park in Kellytown a priority during his tenure as Commissioner, and has requested that that park be named in memory of Bud Kelly, who helped to establish Kellytown. And whereas, it is known from his family and friends that Bud would be humbled that a park dedicated in his honor serves as a place where the community can gather and enjoy the unique beauty of Kellytown together. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners, that the property located at sixteen oh five Kellytown Road, and formerly referred to as Kellytown Park, now be named Bud Kelly Park in memory and honor of Mr. Bud Kelly, this sixteenth day of December, two thousand and fourteen. Signed, Tommy and Smith, Chairman, attested by Shay Mathis, County Clerk.
What I would like to do now is, I know we've got one Kelly member here. Let's have the Kelly families that's here, and let's give a, here and have a picture with the proclamation and the boards. Next, we'll have a proclamation honoring Commissioner Reed Bowman.
Tonight we have a proclamation in appreciation of Reed Bowman, District Four Commissioner from two thousand and seven to two thousand and fourteen. Whereas Commissioner Reed Bowman has served the citizens of Henry County well as District Four Commissioner, providing both exceptional leadership and a powerful voice to advocate for the needs of the fourth district for the past eight years. And whereas, during his two terms in the office, Commissioner Bowman worked tirelessly on behalf of his constituents and made quality of life issues a priority by striving to finalize much-needed transportation and roads projects by effectively utilizing Splas funding. And whereas, Commissioner Bowman has been instrumental in a wide variety of transportation improvement projects throughout District Four and countywide, including the multimillion-dollar federally-funded Eagles Landing Parkway Project, and numerous capital projects, including but not limited to the Eastlake Extension Project, Fire Station Number Nine, the North Police Precinct, Mosley Park, Rock Quarry Road Bridge, and Kellytown Park, now known as Bud Kelly Park. And whereas, Mr. Bowman has consistently used his extensive experience in business, contracting, and construction, and has shared that knowledge with staff and other county officials to save taxpayers of Henry County hundreds of thousands of dollars on much-needed projects throughout the county. And whereas, Commissioner Bowman continually demonstrated his commitment to public service by providing strong leadership to his constituents, seeking education to fulfill his duties as Commissioner, and was the first Commissioner in Henry County history to complete certification with the Association County Commissioners of Georgia for both the County Commissioners' Training Program and the ACCG Certified Commissioners' Advanced Program. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners wishes to express its sincere appreciation to Mr. Reed Bowman for his outstanding leadership and years of service to Henry County, and for faithfully executing the duties of his office for the betterment of the county and its citizens. Be it further proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners wishes Mr. Bowman much success, good health, and happiness in his future endeavors, this sixteenth day of December, two thousand and fourteen, signed by Chairman Tommy Smith and attested by County Clerk Shay Mathis. Thank you.
Thank you so much. What I would like to do now is open the floor up to any commissioner that would like to make a comment.
I just wanna say, you know, when I said these words yesterday, that
What I would like to do now is open the floor up to any commissioner that would like to make a comment.
I just want to say, you know, when I said these words yesterday, that Reed, you're a great leader, and I enjoyed working with you over the last four years. I know you probably don't think so, but I learned a lot from you. I modeled this job after you, and I just want to thank you for your great service to Henry County. Thank you so much, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you. District One. I've been on the board for two years, and Reed is just phenomenal about the knowledge of the county. He's been such a great mentor for me, and anytime we had any issues, he was always there to help with them. And I'd like to personally thank him for eight years of service as Henry County Executive Commissioner. Thank you. I yield the floor to District Two.
I've gotten to work with Reed for three years, and it's been interesting. I think everybody knows Reed is a very successful businessman in the construction field, and it's so interesting to me, though, that I don't think he gets enough credit on the financial stuff that he also knows. It's always been such a good balance to have somebody I could bounce ideas off of, and we dealt with anything that was financial, you know, income statement, balance sheet, cash flows. I mean, you really, they just showed an aptitude and a talent that I don't think you get enough credit, and that goes back to just being an entrepreneur, being successful, and you've been a mentor to about everybody on this board. And I thought it was, you know, one of those things, you look at the fruit of the tree of the person that you're talking about, and I look at you, you're successful. In your public life, you've eight years of well-done, well, you know, good service to the county. Your business, you've been successful. I've met your family, I mean, just incredible to see your success there. And then to have two pastors show up at your retirement party and sing your praises about your walk with Christ, I have just, it's been a pleasure to work with you. We're going to miss you tremendously, and don't be surprised when we call you and ask you advice on some things coming forward, too.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Reed, it's been an honor for me to work with you. I didn't know you before you was a Commissioner, before I was a Commissioner, and we have learned so much from you. I mean, we're looking at things that you always give us another side to look at and some direction, and we're going to greatly miss that. And, you know, as God closes one door for you, he's going to open another for you. And like I said, it's been an honor for me to have worked with you.
Thank you.
I have had the opportunity to work with Reed. I worked for him for three years, and I can tell you I was the best cheerleader he had, and he will attest to that, and as executive assistant to the board. And I worked with him for two years, him being a Commissioner and myself being the Chairman. Reed has given eight years of service to the citizens of Henry County, and during that time, he was very instrumental in the completion of many, many major projects. I think it's safe to say that in his eight years, based on his expertise and extreme knowledge of contracting business and bids and understanding of design bill, he has probably saved Henry County, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars, probably up into millions, saved the county and the taxpayers. And he used that through his bill design process, that's what he does for a living, and he does it well, and he used that knowledge for the advantage and benefit of the citizens. He performed his duties and responsibilities with steadfast dedication, and for that, I thank him for his outstanding service to Henry County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Having said that, I would like to get the family up in the group and get the proclamation, and I will give him the proclamation on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
And after doing so, my family could go ahead and leave, because a lot of people in here, it's going to be an interesting meeting, I'm sure. So, but, you know, really, at the end of the day, you just do the best you can. You wake up, get up, and show up, and do the best that you can. I did hear the lady earlier about doing what you ran on. I will say, I've done the best I could. Not all the decisions are easy. Widening the road here, widening the road there, we'd love to do it all, but where are we going to get the money? At the end of the day, we can't keep going up on property taxes. We pay enough already, if not too much. But, you know, when you're in this position, when you run for this position, you're called on to make those tough decisions, and sometimes those decisions are not popular. And while you have most of the, you get, you know, you get a lot of credit for things, but you also get a lot of blame for things that you have no control over. A lot of times, they're legal issues and other things. Not going to go too much deeper in that, but I will tell you, and I'm not going to apologize for what I'm fixing to say, because I'm going to use my constitutional right to talk about for a second that all the good things and worthwhile things that I've done, I owe the credit to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And who is the author and finisher of my faith? I can never talk about what Christ has done for me without getting emotional. I don't apologize for it, because it doesn't do any good, I still get emotional. But at the end of the day, I appreciate the citizens of Henry County. I love this county. I live here because I choose to live here. I live here, I could live anywhere. I could live anywhere I wanted to. I have offices in multiple states. I could live anywhere. I choose Henry County because I love it, it's a great place to live. I've served on a number of boards. These guys up here have a hard job, and really, I don't know that I've been that much of an influence. I told them I could walk on water, but I had to freeze pond first, and if I freeze it, I can walk on it. But, you know, at the end of the day, I too have served under a number of county managers. If you count county managers in interims, it's been six. It's not an easy job on either side. A lot of work goes into having to do what we have to do. But I want to say thank you to the citizens of Henry County, to the citizens of District Four, to my friends, to those who are not my friends. If you're not my friend, it's not my fault, because I don't hold any grudges. I'm a man of my word, and I do the best I can at what I do. And thank you so much for allowing me to be the representative for the past four years. And Mr. Chair, with that being said, I yield the floor.
Okay. Thank you so much. Next, we'll recognize Mr. Wayne Chase made a request to appear before the board to discuss a county attorney slant county manager. Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here to speak, pardon me?
State your name and address for the records, please.
Wayne Chase, 131 Mosley Drive, Stockbridge. I have received emails and information, I've made phone calls, and I've talked with the newspaper, why isn't the newspaper here tonight? Well, come to find out, I spoke with the Henry Herald, I spoke with the CEO of the Henry Herald, two commissioners, and our county manager went and talked to the Henry Herald. They did not speak with the CEO, I'm the only one, according to him, I think his name is Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And with that, Mike told me that I'm the only one from Henry County that has spoke to him, everyone else has spoke to the editor of the Henry Herald. And with that right there, I've gotten emails where the county manager said that he spoke with the owner of the paper, and that's incorrect. I've also got an email where six men and one woman went into a meeting, and there's even a record here, Mr. Chairman, where you've asked, that you understood there was a meeting with the county clerk in the week of the 13th of September at 6:50. Please provide you with the information of this meeting, and I want to know if you've had any information of that meeting that is of today's date.
I did, but I got it from the county attorney.
You did get it from the county attorney. I spoke with the county attorney today, and he said that was a client privilege there. If two commissioners are in that, excuse me, three commissioners were in that meeting, it's not county privileges for him not to tell me what's going on at that meeting, because you have six men and one woman in there talking about the open records acts on this right here. So that right there, and the county manager was in there, county attorney was in there, IT director was in there, and three commissioners, that's the six men that was in there with the clerk of the commissioners. I have a problem with that right there. And also, I'm the guy that took the commissioners to court in 1990 and said that they violated the sunshine law, when they had, they went behind, in the executive session, they come out and said, "We've created the Henry County Police Department." The justices of the state of Georgia, from the Supreme Court, said that, yes, they did violate the sunshine law. I'm saying now, from where I'm understanding the law, that when you have three commissioners, and I'm not counting the chairman, the chairman is countywide, when you have three commissioners, you consist of a quorum at that time. A county attorney says that's not so, but according to the way I'm understanding, and I've talked with the Justice Department, and they said that we have to pull the charter for this county. He's pulled the charter. Each individual commissioner in all five districts are commissioners for the districts. You, Tommy Smith, you are the chairman of this board, you are the leader of this county, you are the CEO of this county, and you do not represent the commissioners for their districts. You represent this county. You are a voting chairman, but you are not inconsistent with, if any one of the other three commissioners meet together, they are in a quorum, the way I understand from the Justice Department. So I'm asking right now, with that right there, any commissioners, and I've already been told by two commissioners and the county attorney, this goes on all the time. You're breaking the sunshine law, and you're in violations of that law, and you are representative here, and when you do that, you can go to jail, and I'm going to push it if I can find this all out, because I've already had two commissioners tell me this, and it was not you, Mr. Smith, this was two other commissioners told me this. With that, I want to know what went on in that meeting also, because I've had three commissioners in there, and I think I should know. I'm looking at the car situation. We're spending $500 a month for the county manager to have a car. Why don't we buy a car instead of paying $500 a month for him to drive something else that's a gas guzzler? Why don't we just buy a car? We have the means to buy cars, we buy them for Stockbridge Police Department all the time. Let's fix this problem, buy a car and pay the expenses, and that way, we don't have to pay for his personal car. I also talked to Mary Ann Medina, she is now in Austin, Texas, and she said that she's been contacted, not to speak to anyone in Henry County, but she has all the information that was brought out. I spoke with her in length, two weeks ago, and I spoke to her in length Monday of last week, and she told me exactly what was going on in the Gulf Coast. Mr. Walker, and I don't know Mr. Walker, the county manager, I've never met him, I mean, I don't know who he is over here right now, I really don't. But when I see this stuff here, it's like, who got this guy to come to this county? And I understand, Mr. Holmes, that you said a minute ago, we need to stop this finger-pointing. Here's the way I look at the finger-pointing, and this is what the county is looking at, too. We elected you people to be our representatives. We ask you to vote our way, that when you see all these people in these red shirts, and you have nobody speak against them, and you voted in like it vote was voted in on me, you're voting in for us, and I'm single-handedly, I can say this, Mr. Bowman, that I single-handedly got you defeated, single-handedly. You said by two votes, but you made comments about the guy that ran against you, that he wouldn't beat you. I got involved, I got other people involved, and you wouldn't return my phone calls, and when these other people got involved, you lost the race, even for people from your church on that right there. So I apologize to you, you have been a good man, you are a good man, but I just see some things there. Something else that's come up is the Tifton Group that the county manager is involved with, and he's a managing consultant services. It shows that he is the president of the managing consultant services. Now, I have a conflict with that, if he's doing a conflict there when he's managing something else, and he's also the county manager, how can he do both jobs and do them sufficiently? So I have a big problem with that, and I'm asking you to look into that. That's a question I have there, is he still doing that? So that right there is something very important there. The duties of the county manager, according to what I'm reading right here, that it looks like the CEO of this county is you, Mr. Smith. You are the chairman of the board, and you basically designate what his jobs are. He doesn't have to be in the seat of county manager, you can put him doing anything you would like him to do, and no one in this county can go against that. By saying that, if you wanted to put him over at Animal Control sweeping out cages, that's what he has to do, and not one person in this county can go against that. You're the CEO of this county. By saying that is this right here, the sheriff of this county is the chief law enforcement officer of this county. If he walks up on an investigation, he can take it over. All he has to do is say, "I'm taking over the investigation." He is the chief law enforcement officer. I heard you speaking about the county manager, the police department a while ago, Mr. Holmes. Well, the police department has messed up three things on my behalf, three things. Had a limousine stolen, I found it myself, the Atlanta Police helped me out, and the guy that stole the limousine, the detective that investigated that, still with Henry County, did not put him on the MCI list, or whatever you call that list with the national investigation, didn't put him on there, didn't put my limousine on there. I had a limousine company find him, and I had him arrested. On top of that, my house was broken into, had the guy that had a gold chain that I wore around my neck that was broken, that was laying on top of my dresser, he had it on his neck. The lady that did the investigation, not one time stepped foot on my piece of property. I called the police chief on both of those, not one time would the police chief return my call, I had a sergeant return my call. And by saying that alone, it's like this right here. If you people are going to be sitting here and you want us to vote you back in, believe me, I can help get you in or help get you out, and I can push it with this whole county, because I can do that now. If you want us to do that, I think you need to address us and talk with us and see what the people want. And with that right there, it's like, I urge you tonight, Mr. Chairman, to give him duties for the next three months, do away completely with the job of county manager. Why are we paying duplication services for you as our chairman, and he is our county manager? I'm asking to do away with that position completely, because we'd save money, we already cut our taxes right there. Do away with the police department, like I said in 1990, don't even have the police department, why do you need a police department? There was, in 1990, there was 34 counties in the United States that had police departments, and nine of them were right here in the state of Georgia. Nine of them. I don't know what it is today, but why do we need both services? That would put the county manager, right now, making $1,283.33, excuse me, $12,083.33 a month cleaning the dog kennel. That's $36,200 for the next three months, and do away with that position completely. That's the way I would handle it right there. That's the way I would handle it right there. Uh, like I said, I've, I've talked with the newspaper, I'm the only one given that, and why would somebody want to do, tell that this county, they're talking to someone that they're not? I've got, uh, an issue here that I don't understand here, and this, this was, this should be handled with county manager, Terry McMichels, uh, for DOT. Uh, there was a gentleman in Eagles Brook that had a water problem. I talked with someone in Eagles Brook this week, and they said the problem was fixed by county money, it was on private property in a fence, in a gated community. Now, why is our county going out and doing that? Can anybody answer that question? You want to answer the question? You said we were human, let's, let's see if you're human, answer the question, why is, why are we spending money to take care of private property? You don't want to answer that, I have a driveway that got 500 feet that needs to be repaid, that needs to be paved, it's gravel. I mean, that's, what's the difference in doing that, coming to finish my driveway? I serve this country, I have a Silver Star, why can't you do it for a veteran? And ticket fixing, I have one on ticket fixing. This was in your, your district, Mr. Holmes, this gentleman said he met you at a basketball gym or something and talked to you about illegal dumping. Did his ticket get fixed? I've got the ticket number, I can check on that tomorrow.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
I have an email on it, I can, I can, I can show you an email.
You don't have an email from me?
I don't have an email from you?
No, you don't.
Okay, uh, bear with me just a minute, I'm gonna have that email for you just a second, because I've got it right here. This says, uh, let's see, this was, uh... This is from Fred Alata, uh, and you were in, included on this, on that one there, but let's see, there's another one here. Bear with me just a second. Pardon me? You know what I'm talking about now? Okay. Did that ticket, ticket get fixed?
I don't, I don't know. I didn't, I didn't, I just, I didn't, I didn't ask for the ticket to get fixed, I said, "Look into this."
Why would somebody ask you to get a ticket fixed? I mean, that's serious business right there.
Read the email.
Okay. I'll get, hold on just a second, because I wrote on here, "Ticket fixing," on here, so bear with me just a second, there are a lot of papers here. Just seeing it's colder here, gentlemen. This is Mr. Parsons, it says, "Good afternoon, Bruce." This is, his last name is Mr., is Parsons, uh, for, uh, Miss Robinson, barber shop in Ellenwood, you understand what I'm talking about now?
Mm-hmm. I know the barber shop.
Okay, it says, uh, the barber gave him the ticket, says, "I can make, uh, out the la, I cannot make out the last name, the ticket number is 0113 for illegal dumping. My court date is scheduled for October the 2nd, 2014. Please take a look at this matter for me." And he addressed this to you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and it, it says, then the, a next one here says, "Good morning, big bro, I'm following up on the status of the citation, no one has called me, should I report or, or has it been taken care of? Let me know, thanks."
What does, what does my email say?
This was to, to you, right here.
What does my email say?
Sent for your BlackBerry, and it, yours says, "Good afternoon," excuse me, it says, uh, your email, you didn't, you didn't respond to him on it.
Okay.
On that one right there, I apologize.
I get crazy, I get, I get crazy emails all the time.
Wait a minute.
Chairman, chair, chairman, 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 please.
Yes, you did, you said you got it, yes, you did.
Chairman, please, can you stop this stuff, please? We've been going through this for two years, you got people, you have people coming to this meeting.
The rule is, I get up here fifteen minutes.
You have people coming to this meeting, we need to change this process.
You started the dialogue.
We're tired, we're tired of this.
You started the dialogue.
You're the one that said you got it, your email said you got it.
I get emails every day, all day, and all night.
You got it, Mr. Holmes?
Hey, let's, let's, let's move on to another issue.
But I'm just saying, we got ticket fixing on that right there, and, and I would like for you to check into that for me also, right there, those are some questions that I have right there. Let me get back to where I was at here now.
Let me, let me tell you what the rule is, on a five-minute deal and a fifteen-minute, once a citizen gets up here, if you'll notice, at the end of five minutes, I tap, nobody makes a, a comment. Once a commissioner, not staff or the public, once they make a comment and ask the question, it's a dialogue, now.
There's no dialogue, it's early.
The clock comes off because I'm not going to restrict elected official from asking questions to a citizen, that's basic.
They finish the dialogue.
That's what I'm saying.
So why won't you start the clock back?
I have the rest of the night by law.
He does, he, he has it.
By law, I have the rest of the night, Mr. Jock.
I'm gonna say that, just, just wrap it up, can you do that?
I can do it, I got, okay, I'm going on Mr. Jock Sitters now with his stuff. Uh, I'm understanding that Mr. Jock Sitter is representing people of this county and this county at the same time. Uh, Gerald Huggens, uh, and he's, he's got a lawsuit against Henry County. Robin, uh, Bushman, uh, I understand that's, that's something been, been, uh, settled now, uh, outside of court, Toys R Us 205, 2005, Toys R Us, uh, and he's representing that case. Uh, Warren Power, his, is his partner in business, his law partner, and he's handling the, uh, the Rowan case, which their settlement was rejected by you, the board. Now, why would he be representing both, in that right there? Uh, Kim Eubanks, breach of contract pending litigation against the county, he's representing that case. Uh, already been the county manager, it's like, what's going on with this? You know, are these things that we, we need to be looking in here, seeing what's going on? Mr. Jock Sitter, have you got any questions with those?
I can assure the board, I'm not representing anybody, anybody in any claim against the county, and, nor is my law partner.
Nobody's had dialogue until just then, Mr. Chair, and he continues to ramble on and say that.
By law, I have a floor.
Yeah, yeah, but, rap, wrap it up.
I'm not speaking to you, I'm speaking to the chair.
Wrap it up.
Okay, but I, those, those are five cases right there, I would ask you guys to look into right there.
Okay.
So, there we go.
There, you finished?
I'm finished now.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, not to the citizen.
Yes, sir, let, let, okay, I hit the gavel, just come in on it, go.
This is a comment, only a comment. Thank God he got two extra votes. Because I'm happy, okay? Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a presentation of the new Henry County Development Authority website and new economic development branding and marketing. Uh, we're going to recognize the chairman of the Henry County Development Authority, Bill Herndon, who will introduce Bob White, the executive director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, honored board members, we thank you for serving the county. Uh, I am proud to call Henry County my home, and I will call it, uh, my home for as long as I live, I suppose. Uh, the Henry County Development Authority is charged and, and filled by appointees that are selected, as you well know, by the Board of Commissioners. Uh, tonight, we have with us, uh, first of all, we have Jeff Cobble, and Jeff, of course, is a, an appointee of William J. Bo Moss, and we thank you, Mr. Moss, for appointing him. He has turned out to be a real charger and a real go-getter, and, uh, and he turned out to be really, really smart, which you and I already knew before that, but he's a really sharp guy. Uh, the person that we're recognizing that is not here tonight, that is out doing business, as we should be doing, is your appointee, Mr. Holmes, and that's my vice chair, Charles Smith, who is another really sharp, really smart guy. And these two people in, along with Bob White, who is our executive director of the Henry County Development Authority, have developed a plan that we, or I'm going to turn over to them and let you look at what they have been working on. They are our champions on our new website, and we think you're going to be excited about this, we hope this is going to intrigue new business to come here, we're going to continue to work hard in that area, and I'll, uh, turn it over now to, uh, Mr. Cobble, who is, who canceled the trip to New York to come to Henry County.
Actually, I'll jump in here first, if, if I may, uh, thank you, Chairman Herndon, and, uh, Chairman Smith, and members of the board, we appreciate your time, we know you have a very, very busy schedule tonight, a lot of people here, a lot of issues for the county business, so we'll try to be as brief as possible, but, uh, in my nineteen years here, uh, at the Development Authority, my twenty-eight years in economic development in Georgia, we've seen a tremendous number of changes. The way that we market Georgia, the way we market our communities has changed tremendously. This is a very competitive environment that we're in, it's a global economy, we're competing not only against 158 other counties in Georgia, but we're competing against other states and other countries for investment and new jobs. And one of the things that we're always looking at is how can we do our job better? In those years that, uh, I've been working in the business, we've seen a lot of ways that have changed in how we promote our communities, and the growth of the internet and websites are increasingly one of the most important, uh, marketing tools that communities have, and it's the first line for many companies as they begin their search for a, a new location. A couple of years ago, when we had consultants do our target industry study, we also asked them to look very critically at our website, look at our marketing, and to make recommendations. What you're going to see tonight is, initially was an outcome of that consulting group, but also back in January, we presented to you our relationship with Atlas Advertising in Denver, and Mr. Ben Wright, who's the CEO of Atlas Advertising, who he and his team were in town for several days in January to conduct, uh, focus groups of local stakeholders, statewide economic development representatives, and later conducted surveys among economic development consultants and site location consultants nationally. And this, the research that they have done is what has brought us here tonight. Um, I'll just recount if I could for you very, very briefly, what we said, the, the purpose of our study that we used with, uh, with Atlas Advertising, the ultimate goal of the project would be to increase the chances of Henry County being chosen as a business destination, business destination, relocation, expansion, location, by highlighting and differentiating Henry County from the competitive communities in Georgia nationally. This will be done by showing Henry County's value propositions as distinct from other city, county, or regional entities with the state by utilizing a brand that speaks to our unique assets and character. Tonight, we have a couple of things here, we could not do our economic development in Henry County without your support, and we're appreciative of that. We could not be here tonight to talk about our new website and marketing and branding initiative without your support. So we wanted to have a reveal, if you will, the world premiere of our brand-new economic development website, and to tell you what we're going to be doing in the coming months and years to market and promote Henry County. Uh, Chairman Herndon mentioned that, uh, Charles Smith, our vice chairman, could not be here with, with us tonight, he's traveling on business, but Jeff Cobble, who is, uh, our secretary treasurer, uh, was tasked with Mr. Smith to champion this process of going through, and so Jeff will actually present a lot of our, our comments, but I'd like to, if I could, just take you very, very briefly through, in the research that the consultants did, they asked national site consultants a number of leading questions about Georgia, about the competitive marketplace, and about Henry County. And to develop our marketing strategy and, and the, the key elements of that, they asked site selectors which communities in the southeast consistently make the first cut, uh, or the second cut for projects that are considering locations. And you see, the size of the dots there represents the number of times that a community was mentioned in that, so the larger the dot, the more that was mentioned. Atlanta obviously came up in that, in the southeast. In terms of a high-quality manufacturing workforce, not as big. Uh, Georgia, the Atlanta area is not typically recognized as a large manufacturing hub, as are some other communities, but that's good information for us to know and, and how to position, uh, Georgia and Henry County. As a top manufacturing location, Atlanta does stick out, uh, among those competing communities within the state. Proximity world-class colleges and universities, that might be surprising to some people, the Research Triangle area in North Carolina, uh, is a very strong area, but the Atlanta area and the proximity with Emory and Georgia Tech and Georgia State and University of Georgia, and the other institutions, the university system of Georgia and our private colleges such as Emory, uh, really do make Georgia, make Atlanta, one of the top locations for world-class institutions of higher learning. And not surprisingly, Atlanta was mentioned over all the rest, including Memphis, which is the home of FedEx, but as a top logistics location. When you look at Henry County and where we are relative to the other communities in the southeast, and where we're positioned, we are really at the heart of one of the fastest-growing regions in the country, the southeastern United States. If you looked at those dots, and what we're really talking about is connecting those dots, that really became very evident to the consultants in terms of crafting our website and crafting our marketing strategy and the positioning statements that we'll be using to market Henry County. From that, a new logo was developed and a new tagline. The key elements there is connecting Henry County, we have the world's busiest airport, uh, we have the fastest-growing port in the country, in the Port of Savannah. And when you look at connecting those dots, that's very, very important to us, Henry County, we've got a new term that we're using here, that we're connecting business in Atlanta's new south. When we go out and we talk to people and they ask us where Henry County is, we have to make comments relative to Atlanta, we're south of Atlanta. This is a new way of talking about, uh, the south side of Atlanta and Henry County. We think it's an exciting new direction for us to take, and some new language that we're using. The marketing campaigns that we'll be using, we'll be talking about that, Henry's got connections, our access to the 21st century labor pool, uh, in Atlanta, we're only 20 miles, uh, to the city of Atlanta, the, uh, the heartbeat of, of, of the southeast, and arguably the business capital of the southeast, 20 miles to the world's busiest airport, and the best, best Atlanta access to the fastest-growing port in the United States in Savannah. So, Jeff?
From where to where? You mentioned 20 miles with, um, where are you starting from, McDonough, or?
No, we'll, we'll, we'll take it from the northernmost point in, uh, in Henry County, and we'll, we'll use chamber miles, uh, to be able to do this, but it's, uh, it's approximately 20 miles, uh, from the northern point to the southern end of, of Atlanta, the center, central business district in Atlanta. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Bob. So, this is, uh, as Bob said, we're excited to, to be here tonight, we appreciate, uh, the commission's support in this, uh, in this work. We do want to, uh, as, uh, we're unveiling the new website, as Bob mentioned, things have changed in the last, uh, over the years, and, and the website is, uh, we've heard consistently from, from everyone we've talked to, is the number-one place that site selectors and companies start with when evaluating a community. And so it's, uh, the first thing, the first impression, if you will, for our community, um, and we're excited to have this, uh, this new look, uh, with this new message, and with this, uh, vision for how Henry County, uh, with a unique story, can connect business in Atlanta's new south. We do think, you know, that, that story is something that we want to be, uh, be out there telling, and it's only through telling that story repeatedly and having conversations with site selectors nationally, with businesses, with big business, with small business, uh, with, uh, the corporations and professional services, advanced manufacturing and healthcare, uh, telling them about the unique aspects of Henry County, uh, and the access that we provide. I think one of the points that, uh, Bob mentioned on the prior slide, these connections, uh, you know, we don't often think, but we, we are immediately connected to one of the top labor forces in the United States. That's immediately connected to one of the top economic engines in the United States. We are a prime location to provide access to talent. Henry County is full of really smart people doing really great things, and that's a story that we have to be proactive in telling, um, in order to attract business and economic development to the county. So the website's the first line in doing that, um, and it's something that we're excited about. What you're looking at here is the front page, the color's a little dark, um, and we're excited to say that this is live at choosehenry.com, so you can see it in a little better color there, but, uh, but we have the new logo at the top, um, and we have a, a little showcase of a composite of this sort of, um, access that you can have while living in Henry County. Um, I myself, uh, get to travel some for work, have to travel, uh, for work, I had the, uh, unique position this summer of having a business in Italy and having breakfast with a, with a partner in Venice, uh, and, uh, one morning, and that evening, having dinner with my family in Locust Grove, Georgia. And that's something that, you know, that's a story that, that, that's incredible, to be able to travel the world, and it really is through the access provided me by living here in Henry County where I can raise a family, uh, and conduct business. So, that's something, and we have a little vignette of that, um... of that type of access there in the slide bar. Then we highlight some of the connections, and we have featured properties, news and events, success stories. But the real meat, there's a ton of information here in the website, and it starts here on the left with an About Us section, which has your typical information about the mission and vision, Board of Directors, and really, but it allows us to connect with the site developers and businesses that might be evaluating Henry County. We have strategic advantages, and here, I think one of the key things that we heard from the commissioners is that they wanted a place to showcase different elements, different cities, different parts of the county. And so here, under strategic advantage, one of the big advantages we see is we have these great cities in Henry County. And so the first thing here is cities, and within, and underneath cities, we have an area where we highlight the Fairview area, Hampton, Locust Grove, McDonough, and Stockbridge, each with what we call a microsite. It's a little website that talks about that specific portion where we can highlight what's going on in each of these cities throughout the county and tell the story that's unique to Fairview, or unique to McDonough, or unique to Locust Grove, as each of these cities works to grow its economy, and each has its own unique characteristics. So that's a really important part to us and something that we highlight on the page, as well, something that we don't talk about a lot. But in addition, you know, the best way to grow your workforce is to grow through retention and expansion of existing industry, and that's something, business resources, we have information on retention and expansion, small businesses and entrepreneurs, which we hope to help grow into large businesses and employers of the future, corporate citizens have information on incentives and financing, and some of the things that we can help do to bring business to Henry County. Site selection, we have behind the website, something, we have an engine that keeps the website updated on what sites are available in Henry County and how we can help businesses locating here. And then we have maps, things that show us what's going, things on education, transportation, where things are located within the county, all to help market. Essentially, this is, you can think of, this is sales, and we're putting out there why you would want to come to Henry County, and we're providing the sales tools needed to help sell the county to prospective employers. A section on living here, cost of living, the tourism, the events, things that are unique to Henry County, and then finally, contact information. So from that, we have, we developed some campaigns, three campaigns, which you can see here, two of them relate to business recruitment, the top two, which form the vast, seventy percent of our budget. And those audiences are international and national site selectors in the first, and then Atlanta-area site selectors, brokers, and business location decision-makers in the second. These are, we're specifically looking to target some of our key industries like advanced manufacturing, healthcare, professional services, and logistics. So we're using the target industry study to help drive that, and this is where we would go. And then the third campaign, a local Henry Business, to help connect business in Henry County, business retention, proactively engage and build meaningful relationships with some of our existing industry and companies.
One of the things, as I mentioned on the third campaign there, we understand that telling the story to our local citizens, what we're doing, what's going on with the Development Authority, what's going on in the community is a very, very important thing. We haven't always done as good a job on communicating internally with what we're doing, so we actually have an RFP out now to local firms to work with us on developing a separate subset strategy strictly dealing with our local market, with using social media such as Facebook and some of those other sources there, Twitter feeds, that you'll see some examples of that as we're moving along, but we anticipate having that RFP responded to next week, and then our board will be selecting a vendor to supplement what we're working on with the other internal part of our strategy that is depicted here on the screen.
So some of the ways that we execute on this sort of reaching these target audiences, as we said, the world's changing, has changed, the internet, this is the way that we reach people now, pay-per-click advertising, the world of Google AdWords, social media, things like that. So here are some examples of advertising through paid media, through, you can see on the right, a banner ad, and an example placing, placement, the New York Times throughout anywhere that the Google Ad Network functions, using professional social media like LinkedIn, through placement of billboards and signage in targeted positions, and then finally, choosehenry.com. The website is the main traffic driver, and it's set up for analytics. We'll use tools like QR codes to look at specific campaigns and to watch traffic flow and to follow up and to track sales and trying to bring business to Henry County. So that's a brief overview of what we're doing at the Development Authority with our new website.
This is very much a 21st century marketing campaign and marketing ideas and the framework that we're using to promote Henry County and moving forward. Again, the goal is to increase the opportunities for us to bring investment and jobs in Henry County. Again, we couldn't do this without you, with your support for economic development and for the Development Authority. And we wanted to roll this out again tonight here. The website is now live. We'll continue to be making improvements to it internally with what we're doing, but we hope that you'll visit the site and that you'll learn more about it. We think it's going to be an outstanding tool. We'll start rolling out the real campaign, the external and the internal media, really in the coming weeks, months, and years. So thanks again for your time. We've really zipped through this very, very quickly. Be happy to answer any questions you might have, but we do encourage you to visit the website and to look at the information that we're portraying about Henry County and our businesses.
Anybody have any comments? District two?
First of all, really, I like the logo because it gives, it gives a narrative that you're all going to be able to go out there and market, and it shows, it gives a visual proximity very easy. I mean, people are going to get this really quick, and that's important with the logos that it tells a message. You know, my business, we do a lot of, you know, social media, that's how we get business, and I would just encourage you, content, 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 and keeping it active, and having a content manager, and I think that this is definitely going to be a toolset, you know, because everybody uses webs, you know, the web pages, and then I would also encourage us to increase our presence on YouTube and things like that, because that's the second biggest.
All those are elements in there in the.
Search engine out there. So, thanks, guys. Really good.
Anybody else have any comments? Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a consent agenda. The final agenda item shall be considered on the consent agenda. Also note that before voting on a consent agenda, that I will provide opportunity to add or delete any items. Item one, resolution request approval of an addition to an existing streetlight district for the Greenview subdivision. Number two, resolution request acceptance of a donation of two surplus coup buses from the Board of Education to use in training for the SWAT team. Number three, resolution request authorization to accept additional grant fund from the Criminal Justice Coordination Council, and that's in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Does anybody need to add to or delete, or somebody move that we accept the consent agenda that was published?
So moved.
Have a motion, District one. Second from District, no, we have a motion from District three, second from District one. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. That ends the consent items. Next, Police Department have a resolution request authorization to purchase uniforms for the Police Department presented as Major Keith Goen.
Evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. The resolution before you is in reference to a purchase that we're wanting to go forward with. Back in November, we brought a resolution before you to reallocate some funds for the purchase of uniforms. Since that time, we've engaged with the purchasing department, and the Police Department's requesting to utilize an annual contract, which is HC-1410, with the Gauls Incorporated, for the purchase of uniforms in the amount of forty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and therefore, the requisition that's also attached, number ninety-three zero ninety-eight, is requested for this purchase as well.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Now, we have a resolution, Board of Commissioners authorizing the Police Department to purchase uniforms in the amount of forty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, utilizing an annual contract, HC-14-10, with Gauls Incorporated. Somebody got any questions or comment? Have a motion, District one. Second, District five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved.
Thank you all.
The next item, Henry, connecting Henry, Mr. Kip Moss called, he had a conflict that he didn't recognize until after we had published the agenda. Next, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Tim Conley, Director. Good evening.
Good evening. We have a resolution today for the purpose of authorizing a lease contract for Kubota tractor. The tractor is on state contract. The tractor is needed for us as we maintain parks, ballfields, and public grounds. It is a sixty-month lease, and the price is seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and nineteen cents.
Anybody got any questions? Counsel, have you reviewed this lease agreement, and we need to modify it or?
I've reviewed it. It is, it is basically fine. There are a couple of fine points that needed to be added into it to make sure it conforms to Georgia law. My suggestion would be that if it's otherwise acceptable to the Board, that the Board approve it and grant to the Chairman authority to execute it once I get those provisions inserted into it.
We have a resolution to board a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for the purpose of authorizing a lease of a tractor for the Park and Recreation Department, and Counsel has indicated needs some pen and ink, boilerplate suggestions, authorizing a chair, so if somebody would move in that direction?
So moved.
Have a motion from District three?
Second.
Second from District two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Next, we have a resolution request authorization to lease mowers and equipment for the Rack Department.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. For the past several years, we've been leasing our mowers through, Toro mowers through Jerry Pate Turf and Irrigation. They provide excellent service. These mowers get several hundred hours a year put on them. At the end of the four- or five-year leases, we found that we really weren't getting any money back. They didn't have a lot of value. We had some set in auction that are probably still sitting on the DOT yard. So we started going to leases. We get better, we get better use out of them. We can turn them in at the end of the lease, and it's just worked well for us. We have nine mowers right now that the lease has expired. We are looking to turn those back in. We're looking to get twelve Toro Z-mowers, one grounds master, three Toro workmen, those are utility vehicles. And these are all on state contract. And just so you know, that with the tractor and these mowers, we currently take care of twelve-hundred-and-sixty-eight park acres, twenty-five parks, ninety-nine athletic fields. And just so people know, we take care of all the county buildings, too, is fifty county buildings all over the county, from libraries to senior centers to this facility, courthouses, and so that's what these, this equipment will be used for.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comment? Counsel, have you reviewed the lease agreement and?
I would have the same suggestion on this one that you had on the previous one.
Okay, we have a resolution to book, resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for the purpose of authorizing the trade of equipment for the Parks and Recreation Department with the contingent upon putting some boilerplate language in it by reference of the county attorney authorize the Chairman to execute it. Have a motion, District one?
Second.
Second, District five or four, two, District five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. Thank you, Mr. Colley.
Thank you.
Next, we have Splotch Transportation Resolution Request Approval of a Budget Amendment Reallicating Funds from Miller's Mill Road to at SR-138 to Campground Road Extension. Mr. Rocco Romero.
Good evening, Chairman, Board members. Campground Road Extension is a designated Splotch II major transportation improvement project. A budget amendment in the amount of five-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars, five-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, one hundred, five-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and sixteen cents is needed for utility relocation, construction administration on the Campground Road Extension project. Miller's Mill Road at SR-138 is a Splotch II project that was completed in the year 2011. Five-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and sixteen cents is available in the Miller's Mill Road project at 138. Staff recommends approval of budget amendment in the amount of the five-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and sixteen cents to be relocated funds from Miller's Mill to one, at SR-138 project account to the, to the Campground Extension for the utilities and construction administration.
Anybody have any questions or comment?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, this is funding that was left over after we'd finished our work on Miller's Mill, and I want to make the comment that.
That's correct.
Campground Road was actually a District Three project, and then after 2010, when the census and the lines were redrawn, it became a District Four project. And this is a project that's been going on rocky, and I'm going to ask you how long it's been going on, because it was going on for a while before I got involved at all.
You're correct, sir. It started back in November, December of 2003. That's when.
So it's a project that's been going on since 2003, and it looks like we're finally going to be able to move forward and get that project, that extension, done?
Yes, sir.
So with that being said, Mr. Chair, if it's the proper time, being it's in District Four, I'd make the motion, we approve it.
We have a motion, Resolution Henry County Board of Commissioners to approve a budget amendment and transfer the funds from Miller's Mill Road at SR-138, a complete Splotch II project to Campground Road Extension, a designated Splotch II project. Have a motion, have a second from District three. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, so moved. Same.
Thank you.
The same indicator. Thank you. Next, under Department of Transportation Resolution Request Approval of an Amendment, amended list of roads for the use of speed detection devices. Mr. Terry McMichael. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Board members. Henry County DOT brought before the BOC in April of 2014 a request to revise the radar permit. GDOT has requested that Henry County revise this permit to certify the speed limit on I-675 to seventy miles an hour. So along with this change to the I-675 speed limit, Henry County Department of Transportation would like to take the opportunity to make a few changes to the speed limit ordinance as well. These changes were listed. We'd like to take New Morn Drive from State Route eighty-one to State Route twenty, from thirty-five miles an hour to forty-five, New Morn Drive from South Mount Carmel to eighty-one from thirty-five to forty-five, and then South Mount Carmel Road is not posted, nor is it certified at the time, so we would like to get it certified at forty-five miles an hour to make it consistent all the way through that corridor, and so obviously, then the police, after it's certified, can run radar on it.
Anybody have any questions, comments? We have a resolution in the book, a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners Question Approval of the amended list of roadways for use of speed detection devices?
So moved.
Have a motion, District four?
Second.
Second, District two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Would you sign that, pass it down? That's what I sent you that email about. That's the only thing that requires all the Commissioners to sign it. Resolution Request Authorization to Purchase Two Warn Model Thirteen-Foot Salt and Sand Spreaders and One Warn Model Nine-Foot Salt and Sand Spreaders and One Eleven-Foot Waffsal Snow Plow. Yes, sir.
Sir, Henry County DOT currently has two twelve-foot spreaders. One of them is a Warn nineteen ninety-eight, and another one is a Highway, and it is a nineteen ninety-five model. One additional spreader that we have is an eight-foot, and it is a Warn spreader also, and it is a nineteen ninety-five model. At the last snow and ice event, we had, two of the spreaders went down. One was repaired and put back in use during the event, and the other was out until parts could be obtained. We would like to purchase two additional spreaders. They're thirteen-foot long, or eight-point-one cubic foot is their capacity and yardage of sand or salt that they would hold, and one nine-foot spreader to our fleet. This would enable us to put a large spreader, either a twelve-foot or a thirteen-foot spreader, in each of our. in each of our four maintenance districts, and then have the nine-foot spreader dedicated to sanding around the hospital, fire stations, police precincts, jail, our nine-one center, or other essential locations. The last, the eight-foot spreader, would be used for small areas like intersections or quick-response areas, or as a backup spreader if one of the other ones went out. In addition to the salt-sand spreaders, we'd like to add a snowplow to front, to the front of one of our tandem dump trucks. This would be in front of the, one of the spreaders that we would have the thirteen-foot spreader mounted on. In addition, when we have the hydraulic systems modified, we would like to go ahead and get them set up so a snowplow could be added to the, to the other trucks that the snowplows are on in the future, if we can get to the point where a snowplow could be bought for them. The thirteen-foot spreader unit cost is eighteen thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. In order to hook up the hydraulics, the lights, switches, pumps, and all the equipment necessary to power it is four thousand, nine hundred and eighty, and the labor to install is one thousand, nine hundred and thirty, bringing the total cost at twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty. We have two of those. In addition, the nine-foot spreader cost is fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five. Again, the cost for the pump, switches, hoses, quick disconnect, plugs for the lights is four thousand, nine hundred and eighty. Labor again to install is one thousand, nine hundred and thirty. The total cost for the nine-foot is twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Last, the Wausau snowplow with a quick disconnect hitch cost is eighteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The labor to install the plates and all that hold it up there, and the quick disconnects is a thousand, one hundred dollars, being a total cost of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The total cost of all the equipment totals ninety-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair. Purchasing Director needs to add some additional comments to this item.
Say it again, please.
The purchasing director needs to add some additional comments to this item.
The purchasing director has comments, is that what you said?
I just, everything is accurate what you said. It's not a three-quote purchase, it's a sole-source purchase. We have the sole-source letter. We wouldn't have bought that amount of equipment on, on a three-quote. So everything you said is accurate, but it is a sole-source purchase, not a three-quote purchase.
Well-stated, thank you for that information. Having said that, we have a resolution, purchase of two Warn Model of three Santa Fe Charlie, two four-two-zero-A thirteen-foot salt and sand spreader, and one Warn Model Echo AC twenty-four twenty-nine-foot salt and sand spreader, and one eleven-foot Wausau snowplow. Have a motion District Three? Second District Four? Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. While we have you, I think the Commissioner of District Three wants to ask you for a little quick briefing, if there's no objection from the Board about the bridge over on Elliot Road. Is that correct?
That's accurate.
Okay. So you'd be kind enough to give us an overview about Reader's Digest version, how we got there, and what we got to do, and how long it may be out?
Yes, sir. The bridge over Walnut Creek on Elliot Road, we closed this past Friday because of rot in two of the timber pile that bent too on that bridge. So we, we have closed it. Just for the public to know that Georgia DOT inspects our bridges every two years. Back in two thousand, I believe, it was either nine or eleven, probably nine, two years ago, we requested federal funding to get this bridge replaced, because we knew it was getting in bad shape. We received that funding. It was put in place. As a matter of fact, the design has started on that project, although with the Georgia DOT projects, they are a little bit lengthy. The bridge, according to that project, will not be let until two, twenty-seventeen. That was unacceptable to the, to the Board, so we went out and met with Georgia DOT this past Monday on what repair could be done to the bridge in order to get it opened back up. They met with us, gave us some repair items that we could do to that bridge and go ahead and open it back up. I have called five contractors, have met with, between Rocky and I, we have met with three of them today. We'll meet with one first thing in the morning and another one before lunch tomorrow, with the deadline to get quotes in on those repairs sometime tomorrow. So it is our hopes to get those in, make a decision very quickly, and try and see if we can't get that bridge opened up just as absolutely as soon as possible.
Anybody else have any question to comment? Thank you so much, that presentation.
Thank you, Chairman.
Next, plan and zoning, this will constitute a Public Hearing American Life Energy Holding Group Incorporated of Hampton, Georgia, requests a rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to R three Single Family Residential for property located at thirty-four thirty-five Jonesboro Road and Landlot one oh five, one oh six, and one-twenty of the sixth district. The property consists of forty-six plus, six-four plus minus acres, and the request is for residential subdivision. The property is located within District Two. Dante Gibbs, the Director of Planning and Zoning, will be the presenter. Yes, sir.
Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting to rezone forty-six point six-four plus minus acres from RA Residential Agricultural to R three Single Family Residential for property located at three-four thirty-five Jonesboro Road for the purpose of a single-family residential subdivision. The applicant initially proposed a development that consisted of thirty-nine lots with a minimum lot size of eighteen thousand square feet. However, the applicant submitted a revised site plan, meeting the recommendations of staff listed in the staff report prior to the zoning advisory board meeting on November thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen. These recommendations included a minimum house size of twenty-five hundred square feet and loading residential, R two zoning that would increase the lot size to thirty thousand square feet. The zoning advisory board heard the request and recommended denial of the applicant's request to rezone the subject property from RA Residential Agricultural to R three Single Family Residential, and recommended approval of R two Single Family Residential with twelve conditions. And I'll place those on the overhead. As, the twelve conditions are shown, and they include, as I stated, twenty-five hundred square foot minimum house size and thirty thousand square foot minimum lot size with additional conditions. At this time, be happy to ask any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions for? Yes, sir.
I want to thank Dante and then the Zone Advisory Board, because this is one of those that, you know, I know we have quite a few meetings, Dante, and it was nice to, to see that, you know, we tied into the future land use map. We looked at the quality, looked at the, the density, and we went from, you know, trying to go with a smaller-sized lot to where we went with a thirty thousand square foot lot, and made me feel much more comfortable going from thirty-nine to twenty-three on the density. So appreciate y'all's help on, on looking at those conditions.
Anybody else have any comments?
No, it was a public.
At this point here, I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward, please. For the county attorney. You want to do it now? Okay, I'm going to yield the floor. Before we get started, we have a question for.
Prior to this, Mr. Attorney. Number one, Mitch Polk is a personal friend of mine in my family's. Number two, he's, he has worked for me as a engineer on a couple of projects. One as recent as probably the last forty-five days, sixty days on the last one. I don't have any financial interest in his company or anything, but just to make sure that I'm clear, should I recuse myself from that?
The, the legal standard is whether you have any financial interest, you or any member of your immediate family have any financial interest in the outcome of the zoning. If you don't, you're free to vote. If you're concerned about it, I've said this before, if you're concerned about it, then, you know, there's nothing to prevent you from recusing yourself, but the legal standard would not require you to do so.
I'm not concerned about it. I would make the same decision. I just wanted to be sure that, for clarity's sake, that I have had a, we have had business. I've hired him to do work for me, okay? And as recent as forty-five to sixty days. I have no financial interest in his business whatsoever, and we are personal friends. I just want to make sure.
Then you're free to vote, you're free to consider and vote on the zone.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, if you would, state your name and address to the record, please.
Mitch Polk. Address thirteen twenty-two, Idlewood Court, McDonough, Georgia.
Okay, have you got any questions for us? Do you have any questions, or, or is he well-stated?
I, I do have one question that, that I want to address, and Dante may can, can elaborate on. The zoning conditions, number eleven, states that the applicant shall improve Dutchtown Road. There, the subdivision is, is laid out such that there's, there's multiple entrances. One entrance is further north on Dutchtown Road, and then there's, there's other entrances that's further south. I want to see that in the event that the southern portion of this development were not built, that the applicant would not be required to improve Dutchtown Road.
You don't want to do the whole road?
I'm sorry?
You don't want to do the whole road? Not just, I'm, I'm joking with you, because I'm, I'm very familiar with that. As a matter of fact, Crystal Lake, of course, crosses Dutchtown.
Right.
Yes, sir. No, I don't, I don't think that would be expectation, so if you don't feel good with that, if we might modify that to ensure that nobody concretes that it does mean at that time that you'll pave the whole road.
Mr. Chairman, if I may state that condition number eleven was sup, was per Henry County DOT, so any change to that condition would need to be worked out and agreed upon by Henry County DOT.
Okay.
That, that's fine. I just want, you know, we, we, we do plan to improve Dutchtown Road. It's just the event, in the event that something happens that those southern lots does not get developed, we would want to, to have it such that we're not expected to improve Dutchtown Road.
Okay, is that, is that, you satisfied with that language? Okay, we got an odd yes, okay. Do you have anything else? Huh? I saw Patrick indicate.
I, I, I think if, if I understood it the way it was addressed, I think so. So let's hear the motion again and make sure everybody understands it. If there's a question, we'll address it.
You tell me. Terry, do you have problems with this?
It depends on where these entrances are to just, I, I would need a little more clarification on which lots where and how it lays out. I, I'm not quite sure what the intent here is when he says the southern lots, that. I think I would need a little bit more information before I could really.
Is this, we resolve now and go ahead and hear the case?
Correct, there is a site plan, and I can play it on the overhead.
I'm going to cut the clock off, because this may be a thing.
Chairman, one of the concerns, if you build that road down further, is at some point, if you stop, when he says don't build further, what he's talking about building now, I believe the road is paved already. Is that correct?
It's currently paved to probably a hundred yards past the front, or the first entrance that we're proposing. If you notice on the site plan, as you, as you turn off of Jonesboro Road on the Dutchtown Road, we're proposing a first entrance to be about four or five hundred feet down that lines up with the intersection of the subdivision across Dutchtown Road. That entrance will, will certainly be built irregardless, if the development moves forward. There's, however, if you look, Dutchtown Road ends a few hundred, like I said, about three hundred yards past that first entrance, on past those two ponds that you see, and then there's another, actually three more entrances proposed further south. The zoning conditions simply state that we would improve Dutchtown Road to the southern portion of the property. If, if in the event that we only develop those front northern lots.
You said if you don't develop the other part.
This side over here.
Okay, I, I think what we can do is just put some language in there that you will initially pave, not to exceed ever how many footage it gets of that, and then in, in the event that you improve one or any of them other lots, how you will, you will do the whole remainder.
Absolutely.
Okay, that seems simple to me.
What my thoughts are, that if, if he only does the nor, the northern lots, at some point in time, that puts more and more cost of, of developing the rest of that road. If he turns and walks away, then everyone who leaves this back portion, that certainly would increase the cost of doing that lot. I mean, per lot, doing the road. If you see what I'm saying, sooner or later, the cost of doing that road has got to be spread over into the lots. If you reduce the amount of lots it's spread into, I'm just concerned that whether that.
Is this something we can table without having to re-advertise it? We can, okay. Is it, anyway, we can table this without?
Well, I, let me say this. I, I agree with, with what Terry's saying, and, and I, and thinking about this, it might be wise for us to go ahead and, and build a portion of, of that roadway initially. I don't at all disagree with what you're saying. In fact, I, I think that's a wise idea.
So you're agreeing with, with number eleven as it's published?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's move on. You got any other questions?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm going to give you twelve point oh one. Okay, now I would open the floor for any, anybody else that would like to be heard this time in favor. If you're in favor of it, come to the podium and state your name and address. Okay, see you none. I'm going to open the floor for a public hearing for fifteen minutes for anybody that supposes this request, and if you would, come to the podium and give your name and address, and it's fifteen minutes total. Okay, not seeing any of the public hearing part of public participation is over. So you got twelve minutes and zero one. Do you want to make any, any additional comments?
No additional comments.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Staff, Mitch, I mean, we just want to clarify this. It's one of those things we want to measure twice, cut once, make sure we get this thing right. Staff has asked that we need to put some type of time-certain period of when the improvement to the road will occur. Otherwise, it, it could, this thing could sit out there in limbo for, for an extended period of time. And, and that's what, and staff, feel free to, Terry, whether it's you, Sherry, or Terry, if y'all want to give your thoughts on how we can move this forward. I just want to make sure we get that, that language correct.
What we typically do is put a condition that prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or CO, that the improvements be made, and that way we're able to make sure that that condition is met. So if it is the, the will of the Board to approve it, staff would recommend that that language be added to that condition.
After hearing that, are you amenable to that, what they just discussed? Would, would you explain to him?
Yeah, Mitch, what, what, what Sarah just said, what Sherry just shared, was, is that we've, when we've had, when we're trying to add a time certain, just to, for the, add accountability factor to it, to these provisions, before we could issue a CO, the improvements would have to occur. Is that correct, Sherry?
That is, that is correct. So that would not be at the land disturbance.
Right.
Process, but prior to you issue, to that one, or prior to the CO being issued.
Right. Now, I, I will say, I would, and I'm, the county may make us improve the entire length, but it just, what Mr. McMichael alluded to earlier, that, that if we wait till later, the latter, the latter lots that we build will burden the cost of that road. At the same time, we'd rather not burden all of the, the front lot costs to build the road. So is there any way we could build maybe half of that road with the first half of the lots?
Terry's got some comments.
I would understand that, and, and I would suggest if we could at least pave down to that first entrance on the, the southernmost. that first entrance, on the southernmost portion-
Right.
That would connect that up, and I think that would be a reasonable meeting, if you will. I think I could be comfortable with that.
So verbiage-wise, how would we add this to the context of the language of this resolution?
I think the same thing. We would say, I don't know what the name of that road is, if he would pave down to Lot Twelve, or is it Eighteen? That's Eighteen, I think. Is it Twelve? It's this one here. Where are Eighteen?
I'll suggest this while they figure it out, and they'll tell me if I'm wrong. I would suggest you say that the developer would pave Dutch Town Road to the northern boundary of Lot Twelve, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any portion of the northern half of the property. You got that so far? And that the developer would pave Dutch Town Road to the southern end of the property, prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy for any, on any portion of the property, south of the northern boundary of Lot Twelve. All is shown on the site.
Comfortable with that?
I'm good.
I got one comment on that. Can we say down, not to the south property line, but down to the creek? We don't want to cross the creek. That's going to require a bridge, or a large culvert system, with no benefit to our property.
The only concern I have stopping there is people start down that road, and there's no, not enough room for a cul-de-sac in that area on that side. He's correct about the cost, there is a, it would be a significant cost there at the creek.
Now, we would be willing to put a turnaround that's suitable and meets fire code for fire truck turnaround.
That's why I was thinking where we could put it there, because then-
Well, it's going to go down here at some point.
Yeah, but he's, what he's wanting to do is stop.
For the initial.
I guess that's better.
What if the second half, you changed it to say that he would pave to a point south of the southernmost entrance, into the southern section of the property, and he provide a turnaround suitable for emergency vehicles? Something like that, ain't that? That way at least people can turn around before they have to cross the creek.
I want to see it now from Terry.
Yeah, I don't-
Terry's doing bad. He's still absorbing, I can tell.
Now, I will comment, there's other developments, this proposed, as you are probably well aware of, this further down Dutch Town Road, that's much larger than this development, that would benefit from the creek crossing.
Is that Lot One? Let me see what you- So you're talking about stopping here? See, the culverts here. So he's, what he's saying is not, he'd cross. Well, if he'll go to the-
Yeah, we're going to get into the creek there?
Landlot line or the end of that last lot, either one.
What if we make that southern, the southern portion pave to the landlot line between whatever those two landlots are? My glasses aren't strong.
One oh six, one nineteen.
That work?
Yes.
Y'all gonna be able to write that down? With everything that's been discussed, I make a motion to deny the R-three request, but approve the R-two request, with the twelve conditions put in by the zoning advisory board, also with the understanding that we'll pave to the northern boundary of Lot Twelve, prior to the COs being issued in the northern part of the development, and then pave the southern part to the boundaries of lots one oh six and one nineteen, with the understanding there also will be enough room for a turnaround for emergency vehicle in that area. Did we hit it?
Are you agreeable to that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, we have a motion, second by District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing. SW Jenkinsburg LLC of Atlanta, Georgia, requests a rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to C-one Neighborhood Commercial for the property located north of Old Jackson Road and south of Legwin Mill Road in Land Lot Two-five-five of the Second District. The property consists of four point nine eight plus or minus acres, and the request is for a commercial development. The property is located within Commission District One. Presented, Dante Gibbs. Mr. Gibbs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant is seeking to rezone four point nine seven plus minus acres, I'm sorry, a four point nine seven plus minus acre tract of land. There is a portion of a larger five point nine seven plus minus acre tract of land from RA Residential Agricultural to C-one Neighborhood Commercial for future commercial development. At this time, the remaining one point oh acres will remain zoned RA Residential Agricultural. The zoning advisory board heard the request and recommended denial on September eighteenth, twenty fourteen. This item was scheduled for the November eighteenth, twenty fourteen Board of Commissioner meeting, but was tabled by the applicant prior to the meeting. The planning and zoning department did receive one email this afternoon in opposition to the case, and that was forwarded to the county clerk, and at this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions for staff? Not, if an applicant appear and states your name and address for the records, please.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, this gentleman is wanting to speak in opposition, and so-
Say again?
This gentleman is to my right, he wants to speak in opposition, but it's not time-
Well, we can't have the opposition yet. We have to listen to the applicant first. Is the applicant like to present his case? Here comes the applicant. State your name and address, please.
My name's Jason Fritz, my address is forty-one fifty-one Ashford Dunwoody Road, Atlanta, Georgia. I would like to thank you for hearing our request. Prior to the board, considering this matter, I want to reserve our right to a constitutional challenge of the board's decision, should it not approve our request. I understand this is a very contentious issue, and unfortunately, we were not able to come to an agreement with the neighborhood, but I'd like to state a couple facts about the case, and notably that our development is in accordance with the future land use for this property. And two, we also had planning and zoning staff support for this project. Again, I'd like to thank you and appreciate your positive consideration of our request. I'd like to leave the rest of my time for rebuttal.
Do we have anybody, I'm gonna let this constitute the public hearing, do we have anybody here that's in favor of this proposed rezoning? If so, if you would, come to the podium, state your name and address for the records, Okay, now we recognize people as opposed to this development, and you'll have fifteen minutes, and what that means is, one person can speak for fifteen minutes, or you can get other people. State your name and rec, state your name and address for the records, please.
Pete Knickless, nineteen twenty-four Legwin Mill Road, Locust-
I'll bring the mic to you.
Pete Knickless, nineteen twenty-four Legwin Mill Road, Locust Grove, Georgia. Mr. Smith, I'd first like to present to you and to your attorney a letter that details the constitutional rights of the neighborhood owners who are opposed to the rezoning. If I may give it to your attorney?
Give us your clarification.
So our neighborhood is adamantly opposing the rezoning of the corner lot on Old Jackson Legwin Mill, from the current residential agricultural to neighborhood commercial. Early in September, two blue signs were posted regarding Henry County Planning and Zoning Board meeting in regards to rezoning the corner lot on Old Jackson and Legwin Mill, from residential agricultural to neighborhood commercial. This was the first notification to the neighborhood community regarding this action. Though we were told that a mailer was sent to all in the community about the rezoning activity, not many received the letter. Neighbors organized, secured public information regarding the rezoning, spoke to our local commissioner, Bo Moss, and then went door-to-door, talking, notifying, and alerting the entire neighborhood of the pending activities. The neighbors were overwhelmingly against the rezoning and the building of a Dollar General store in our neighborhood. With the help of Bo Moss, we set up a neighborhood meeting on September the thirteenth, Locust Grove Recreation Center, and one hundred and forty-nine adult neighbors attended a four-hour discussion. There was a resounding proclamation, we don't want rezoning, we don't want Dollar General in our backyard, we want our elected government representatives to know where we stand and to support our interests. The neighbors developed an internet petition for the purpose of opposing and rezoning the Dollar General. Nine hundred and seventy people signed the petition electronically, and one hundred and forty hard copy signatures. The neighbors organized the opposition using social media like Facebook. During the planning and zoning public hearing on September the thirteenth, there were approximately two hundred people opposing the rezoning in attendance, in this room, and it was standing room only. The Henry County Planning and Zoning Board listened to the voice of our community and turned down the rezoning unanimously. On December the fourteenth, Sunday, we organized another neighborhood meeting, which, again, Bo Moss helped us with the venue. We met at the Locust Grove Activity Center to discuss this presentation to our commissioners. Our purpose is to help our commissioners understand how steadfast we are in thwarting the rezoning, and to ensure commissioners clearly realize the volume and commitment of the neighborhood's interests. Our neighborhood is a quiet, safe, peaceful, semi-rural area of home and landowners, and for these reasons, we live there. There are no commercial businesses in our neighborhood, zero commercial. We don't need commercial as we buy our groceries at other retail stores. This rezoning is unnatural and not needed. A Dollar General store currently exists three point seven miles due west of the proposed rezoning, and another Dollar General about four point one miles northeast. People do not walk to the Dollar General, they drive to stores, and there are ample similar retail stores in Henry County as we drive home from work. There are twelve similar Dollar General, Dollar Tree, Family Dollar, convenient retail stores within an eight point five mile radius of the proposed location. We do not want, or should I ask, do we want Henry County to be known as a county of low level retail outlets? If the county needs more of these type of convenience stores, utilize the available Henry County vacant commercial lots. This new store could become an anchor or a linchpin store, which motivates more commercial stores. Your actions could irreparably harm our happy, safe homeowners community. You will be supporting a decline of our community if you support the rezoning. Homes will depreciate, as will associated county tax base. People will sell, move out, as they will not want to live in a congested commercial vicinity of high traffic and high criminal potential. Tragically, a criminal element will sprout, and this will obliterate the safeness of our community and increase the fear factor in the neighborhood. In the last forty-five days, Henry County Police Department reports robbery, October thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, nine P.M., Dollar General, Highway one fifty-five Stockbridge. Robbery, November the second, eight P.M., Dollar General, North Henry Boulevard. Three fired shots during the incident before leaving the scene. Are you ready for gunshots, ambulances, and squad cars? Only the developer of the property will do well. This will be the consequence of actions if you approve rezoning. The developer from outside Henry County community will be enriched. The neighbors will be injured should you oppose what our planning and zoning board turned down in September. The planning and zoning board listened to the people in September. Will you, as our elected representatives, please do the same? The previous commissioners approved the future land use map five years ago, during the worst of our economic recession, a time when many were worried about employment. Sadly, it was a well-kept secret from our neighborhood community. No one in the neighborhood knew about the rezoning until this fall's recent request for rezoning was made public. If our elected commissioners make such a major and significant change, as is contemplated in the future land use map, it is the responsibility of our commissioners to ensure information is actively communicated to all affected neighbors. Put yourself in the shoes of your constituents. Get the signs out to ensure people see the poster of what is going to happen. Don't depend on internet or local newspaper. Otherwise, your constituents will think the actions are sneaky, underhanded, conniving, backroom politics, only because of poor communication. It needs to be coordinated of such zoning activities. By ensuring communications on major changes like the future land use map, our commissioners will keep the trust and competence of your constituents, when you will allow them to voice the will of the people. Remember, our neighborhood is a hard-working, religious, family-oriented, with children in school, busy everyday activities to be good citizens, good parents, and taxpayers. Neighbors typically don't get involved with many political activities unless we are blatantly, deliberately, and patently told about what is going to hap, what is going on with politics. Separately, this action may be deemed a spot zoning, which may be further frowned upon. Commissioners and developer, rest assured, if you authorize rezoning, we will not go away quietly into the night. We will further organize the opposition to the fullest extent of our wherewithal. Commissioners, please support your constituents, as there is significant legal precedent to turn down this rezoning as follows. Supreme Court of Georgia, Barrett versus Hamby. A rezoning decision has to balance the interests of the homeowner and the community. Supreme Court, Georgia, Jebco Ventures versus Smyrna. The court held the potential economic loss from the refusal of the city to rezone the property was not sufficient reason to order the rezoning. The court found that the property had substantial value as it was zoned, and served public interest as a buffer between commercial and residential area. Supreme Court of Georgia, Delta Cascade, the fact that property will be more valuable if rezoned is immaterial. Supreme Court of Georgia, future land use map, quote, constitutes- Supreme Court of Georgia, future land use map, quote, constitutes, constitutes a policy guide and has no legal force. Supreme Court, Georgia, City of McDonough versus Tusk Partners. Evidence on behalf of the city included testimony by the city planning expert, that the property was in the midst of a development, of a developing residential area, that a domino effect would result if the property was zoned commercial, that traffic would increase, and that plenty of commercially zoned property already existed in the area. There was also testimony that the property was worth 250,000 as zoned, and that Tusk has not attempted to market, use, or sell the property. I'd like to give you a quick PowerPoint presentation, if you will. Not in our backyards, please.
Put it down, buddy, backyard.
So it's a trade-off of value. On the left, you see, there's going to be significant investment, cost of infrastructure, repaving rural roads, to handle the increased commercial traffic, widening the road, add turning lanes, facilitate semi-trucks for delivery, and possibly a traffic sign for needed increased flow of traffic. Versus on the right, projected share of property taxes to be distributed to County General Fund, plus 1% splosh that may, may not be in effect at any given moment. The splosh estimating 1 million in total sales for that, a similar Dollar General in Peakesville, 10,000, and then based on the 2014 property assessment of Dollar General on Peakesville, and this is the county property tax information, if you look at the lower right, it's 4,400 dollars, an aggregate of 14,000, 14,000 dollars a year. Negative impact on the neighbors, decreased property value, quote, realtor, appraisals are done, are done using comparable sales within the past three months of three miles of subject property, but up to six miles, as well as location, seller's timeframe, improvements, condition, market, and the neighborhood are impacts. Further, increase in crime rate, six documented armed robberies, including the last two in the last 45 days. Diminishment of quality life. As you can see, these are some of the homeowners and neighbors and the rural life that we currently possess. We welcome business, however, we have ample vacant lots elsewhere that are already zoned commercial. I apologize for the poor picture here, but this picture on the right are shots of within a 12-mile radius of the location. There are 10 Dollar General stores, you can see them in little reds. In addition, similar competitors, Dollar Tree on the left, another 12 Dollar General stores, and on the right, Family Dollar, another 10 dots where they currently exist. So in closing, if you would, please vote no on this commercial rezoning. The rezoning site is surrounded by residential and agricultural homes. Dollar Generals do not have a reputation for being clean, well-kept stores, and in addition, violate county and local ordinances by having merchandise outside their stores. Traffic will increase, specifically with the use of semi-trucks through the residential areas. Higher expenses on taxpayers to build the infrastructure. There are plenty of vacant commercial zone lots, buildings available in Henry County. People that purchased homes in this area did so to be further away from commercial businesses. There will be decreased property values, and there will be an increased crime as a legacy to such a decision. Thank you.
No rezon.
Anybody who wants to make a, in opposition?
No reason, no reason, no reason, no reason, no reason, no reason.
Okay.
Wayne Chase, 131 Valley Road. I've also owned a property at 101 Valley Road, and they put the Dollar General straight across the street from my house, and it brought my property value down from 141,000 down to 30,000 dollars this year. So I'm, I'm with these people, we don't need a Dollar General in.
Time's expired. If the applicant would, would come forward, you got 13 minutes for the applicant, if you want to reappear. And if anybody's got any questions or comments, or if you want to make any additional comments.
Again, I understand this is a very contentious issue. Just like to, to say that we are in compliance with the future land use map for this property, and we do have the planning and zoning staff support. So we'd appreciate your approval of this request, and I'll take any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Your backyard?
Okay, the, there's a resolution in the book, there's a resolution to deny or to approve a rezoning request by SW Jenkinsburg LLC from RA Residential Agricultural to C1 Neighborhood Commercial for a property located north of Old Jackson Road and south of Le Guin Mill Road in Land Lot 255 of the 2nd District, consisting of 4.98 plus or minus acres.
Yes, Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion, and I would make a motion to deny the rezoning in Le Guin Mill and Old Jackson.
We have a motion on the floor, we have a second. Have a second, District 4. Any further discussion? All in favor of the resolution motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. I, I know y'all don't want to stay for the remainder, so the chair takes the executive decision, and we're going to take a recess for five minutes, and that way, the ones that want to leave can leave. Five-minute recess.